That's it, and we are recording now, thank you. Just a reminder, switch off your phones if you can't put them in silent mode. If you need to pop out and make a phone call, that's fine. Just quietly nip out and come back again, or if you're online, just mute your screen. We welcome today, we've got visitors from Audit Scotland, we've got representatives Fiona Mitchell Knight, who's Audit Director, we've got Louisa Yule, who's the Senior Audit Manager, and Kieran O'Brien, who's a Senior Auditor, and that's in respect to item two on the agenda. Thank you, and we'll go to Stuart Nelson now, who's going to do the sedaring and any apologies that we've got.
Thank you Chair and members for the sedaring. If you could confirm your presence when I call your name, so councillor Peter Maybin.
Present.
Thank you, have an apology from councillor Sally Cogley, councillor Stephen Canning.
Present, thanks Stuart.
Yep, thank you, councillor John McFagin has put an apology in, councillor David Richardson.
Present Stuart.
Yep, thank you, councillor Jane Sangstar.
I'm here, thank you Stuart.
Thank you, councillor Jim Todd. Councillor Todd. Okay, councillor Kevin McGregor.
Present, thanks Chair.
Okay, have an apology from councillor William Lennox, councillor June Kyle.
Present.
Yep, thank you, I have an apology from councillor Jennifer Hogg. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, and we'll go to David Mitchell, Legal and Governance, and it's to tell us about declarations of interest, if we have any declarations of interest.
So Chair, just as usual, I wouldn't expect any, given the content of the two port papers in front of members, but as always, if members know anything different, I don't think any members declared any interest when we set this budget, so I wouldn't have thought any members have any interest that would affect the outcome on last year's performance, but as always, it's members' best and it's members' responsibility to comply, so I'm not expecting any, but I would just seek confirmation from members that nobody wishes to declare any.
Thank you David, any elected members, any declarations of interest? And online, we'll take that as a no, we'll move on to item two on the agenda, which is the annual audit report by the Chief Financial Officer and Head of Finance and ICT. We're going to Colin Hastings, please.
Thanks Chair, just by introduction, the purpose of this report is to introduce the annual audit report from the council's External Auditor Audit Scotland, including the outcome of their audit of the annual accounts for the year ended 31st of March 2025. Following the review, there were three recommendations highlighted to enhance the annual accounts. Adjustments for two recommendations set out in the report have been updated in the audited annual accounts document presented for approval and signing today, with the third to be considered going forward for future accounting treatment. We are pleased to advise that an unmodified audit opinion will be issued in relation to the accounts. Additionally, the report provides findings on external audit review of best value and wider scope work. I'm happy to now pass over to our External Auditor Fiona Mitchell Knight, Audit Director, to present her report in more detail, thank you.
Thank you Colin, thank you Chair, and we're pleased to be here today to present the findings from the 2425 audit. And the package of papers that you see before you includes the annual audit report, which I'm going to take a few minutes to reflect on, and it also includes from page 65 onwards, a covering letter which describes our completion of the audit and includes a copy of the audit opinion. And as Colin said there, it's an unmodified audit opinion, or unqualified or clean, all good news anyway, whichever terminology you use on that, so credit to the finance team for working on the accounts to reach that position. It's not something that should be taken for granted. Along with our audit opinion in that covering letter, we include what we call a letter of representation. And the letters of representation are part of the audit evidence jigsaw that we gather as part of our audit to provide assurance on the figures in the accounts. And this just sets out in writing the approach to preparation of the accounts. And I'm pleased to say that there's nothing unusual in those letters of representation, and it's just procedural that you receive a copy of those, so that's all good news. So I'd like to spend most of my time reflecting on the proposed annual audit report, and that's at page eight of your papers, the key messages in particular. And again, we're referring to that unmodified auditor's report. And just to draw to your attention, it covers the council, the group, and similarly for the section 106 charities that's administered by the council, there are equally clean audit opinions. So by giving you a clean audit opinion, what we're saying is the financial statements give a true and fair view of the financial position of the council at the end of March and for the financial year. And true and fair means that they've been properly prepared in accordance with the relevant financial reporting requirements. So that's really good news. In the key messages, I also reflect on our views of the council's financial management. And in this section, I'm reflecting on the outterms of the financial position that is reported in the accounts, which I know you've got an access to, and we're saying that financial management is effective and the council operated within budget for the year, and indeed 2.866 million have been added to reserves. And that means at the end of the year, total usable reserves have increased by 5 million, and total 117 million at the end of March. Of this, of course, large amounts are earmarked for future use, and we reflect there that that's in the region of £60 million that's earmarked. We also reflect on the capital programme and how effectively the council manages its capital investment. And we're reflecting there on the Building a Future East Ayrshire Capital Investment Programme Review, and that a further update was carried out on that programme in February 2025, and that was done alongside the setting of the 2526 revenue budget, so that's good to keep that under review. We reflect positively on some changes that have been made to the format and context of East Ayrshire performs in terms of the financial information, and the council is always looking at ways that it can be improved. And pleased to say that this looks better in a more visual format, and so that makes it easier to read as part of those reports. The next section of my key messages is on financial sustainability, and this is where we look forward into how well-prepared the council is to face the financial challenges and sustain its services into the future. So we're reflecting there on the medium-term financial strategy and the size of the budget gap projections. So there's now a cumulative gap of 27 million in the period 2728. Moving back though to the current year, and a balanced budget was set for 2526, and in order to do that, you'll be well aware that it meant increasing council tax by 8%, and that savings of 8.5 million needed to be delivered also. We're reflecting on the use of your earmarked funds, and in particular drawing to attention as a good practice example, the earmarked funds for early intervention and prevention, and that's where the funds have been put forward to be used over a 10-year period with an aim to reshaping the future demand on council services. So that's a long-term investment in those council services, as I say, we've highlighted that as a point of good practice in our report. In terms of vision, leadership and governance, we reflect on the fact that the council's priorities are well-established through the strategic plan and the service improvement plans, and performance reporting against those priorities is balanced and regular to elected members through a variety of formats. We say that governance arrangements are appropriate and have operated effectively. In the use of resources section, we reflect on how you go about reporting on the performance, and as I say, we welcome developments in terms of performance dashboards, which improve the accessibility of public performance information and how it's reported. And at point 12, we reflect on what that performance information is showing, and it's showing that overall service performance has remained relatively stable compared to other councils, but it's shown signs of improvement since 2010 and also over the prior year. So in terms of comparison with other councils in 2324, 56% of the local government benchmarking framework indicators were in the top two quartiles. We do reflect though at point 13, that given the service demand and cost pressures, it's unlikely that the council will be able to maintain performance across all services that is currently provided, and difficult choices will need to be made about service and performance priorities, and getting that balance right about the level of service that can be delivered efficiently with the financial envelope available to the council. The last section of my report is on best value, and we're concluding that the council demonstrates a strong culture of continuous improvement, and that's a really positive message. And we feel that transformation is embedded within service delivery, and services take direct responsibility for delivering change. And most importantly, that transformation is aligned with the medium-term financial plans, and they drive each other into the future. We reported in April on a review that we carried out on a best value thematic topic, and that was on transformation. And we summarise in the report our findings from that report, but you did consider the full report in April. And that really concludes that the council has been innovative and demonstrate its commitment to transforming services. And again, I'm referring to that 10 million intervention fund, 40 million, sorry, the 10-year transformation fund to support the programme of early intervention and prevention. And finally note that the council is continuing to work towards progress on actioning previous best value recommendations that we've reported on earlier, work on leadership and on workforce, and progress is being made on those recommendations and is reflected in the action plan appendix in our report. Finally, before I give you a chance to ask us any questions, we have an action plan at page 50 of our report. Check the page numbers under your, yeah, yes, it's page 50 of your page numbers, page 45 of our report. I'm pleased to say there was only two recommendations that we made this year as part of the audit. One is relating to accounting and technical accounting for revaluation reserves, and the second relates to the pressure of social care budgets and the need for council to work with health and social care partners to review commissioning plans and to look at how they can be delivered within the financial envelopes available into the future. Pleased to say that management has accepted both of those recommendations, and we're satisfied with the proposed actions that are included in the action plan there, and we will be reporting on progress against those as part of next year's report. As I say, we've also reported on follow-up of prior year actions as part of that appendix. So that's really all I wanted to say, a quick rundown on our report. We welcome the opportunity to be able to discuss it with you, and we're happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much Fiona. We'll open up the room, our online to questions, I would ask elected members, if you're going to ask questions or comment, can you tell us the page and the paragraph you're looking at so we can all follow and see where your question's coming from? I'll, I think I'll start first. You've got accounting for IFRS 16, this is in page 19, a new report. It's page 24 in the council papers. Areas identified by audit a significant risk within the accounts. And this is a new area this year, I know that's been a significant area of work for officers, and no issues have been identified, can I just pick up on how your work went on in this area?
Thank you Chair, our work was very, it was, the work was well documented, the process at the council, is that better? The work undertaken by the council was well documented, a very meticulous and methodical process has been undertaken, and it was clear that a lot of work had been undertaken in identifying all the leases and going through a process and following the technical guidance. And there was no issues raised from the work that we under, the review of the work that we undertook.
Thank you, I'll go to councillor Sangstar and then councillor McGregor online.
Thank you Chair, I'm looking at pages 11 on to 12 in your report regarding the Early Intervention and Prevention Fund, the change in the accounts for 27.8 million. Is that going to make any difference to the ability to access or use the funding? And can the council still use the funding as planned? Thank you.
I'd just like to confirm that it makes no difference to the access to the funding. So we looked at the accounting treatment of that fund, and following discussions then with the finance team, it was decided that the accounting treatment will be changed in line with what we thought was the best fit with the guidance, but it has no impact on how that funding can be used. It's put aside as an earmarked balance specifically for use for the stated purpose there.
That's lovely, thank you.
Thank you for the question, and thank you Fiona for the answers, councillor McGregor online.
Thank you very much Chair, I'm just looking at page 13 of the report, page 18 on the council papers, just with regard to the revaluation reserve entries. There's a recommendation to review the accounting entries, but don't see any changes to the accounts this year. Is this an issue that has just occurred in this year's accounts? Why is there no change required? Thank you.
So I identified this point when reviewing some of the revaluation adjustments this year, and it only applies to a small number of assets, and generally those assets where the revaluation reserve would have reduced in balance, so where the revaluation of an asset decreased. The reason there was no adjustment in this year's accounts was because the difference wasn't, was below our trivial threshold, which is around £700,000, which is outlined in exhibit one of the report. And I think the adjustment that would have been required this year was around £300,000. So our recommendation is for the council to review these accounting adjustments going forward, and just to make a slight change to the process internally and how they record on their working papers, the adjustments that would be required. And obviously in other years, depending on the movement and valuations of assets, that might be a bigger adjustment that would be required. So therefore, for the purpose of our audit, we didn't require an adjustment to be made.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you councillor McGregor, councillor Stephen Canning, thank you.
Thanks Chair, a couple of questions. First one was just in terms of IFRS 16, which is bringing leases on to the balance sheet. What was the overall net position, net asset or liability created by bringing those on to the balance sheet? And is there any impact on the ability of the council to borrow because of those changes? That's the first question, sorry, and just the second question was just very briefly, are there any significant changes to letter of representation this year? Any material changes from the previous year in terms of new items where representations have been sought, or significant changes in the representations themselves? Thanks.
I'm going to leave offices to frantically sort through the accounts to find the IFRS numbers for you, but just I can confirm that there's been no significant changes in the letters of representation, the pretty standard representations that we obtained from all councils relating to the accounting treatment. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just to sort of kind of come in there, in terms of the IFRS 16, the net impact on the balance sheet overall is zero, because ultimately as much as the leases and the assets have to be recognised, so does essentially the lease payments and the financing as well. So the entries are actually going both sides, it's more about actually recognising the existence of the assets. This is an area where previously assets that weren't owned by the council, but we had essentially almost exclusive right to use the assets, weren't recognised. So overall, in terms of the balance sheet position, the net impact is zero. In terms of the borrowing position, the detail on that, there is an impact, and it does, the entries for IFRS 16 do have to be included in terms of our capital financing position, and that's something that following their implications this year will be worked into the treasury management report going forward, and the borrowing requirements there, so there is an impact in terms of the sort of borrowing position and our sort of agreed levels of borrowing that we can take forward, so there is an impact on that side.
Thank you councillor Canning, if you want, and Joe? All right, okay, councillor Kyle online?
Sorry, I'm struggling on my phone here. Page 35, I think it was. Okay, I found it yet, aye, page 35, I was looking at the financial sustainability. Basically, we know the challenges that face in the council, how do we compare with the rest of the Scottish councils?
So councillor, it's down to each individual council to decide what's the appropriate level of reserves to maintain, appropriate to their local circumstances, so we don't sort of have league tables as such, but what I would say is that we're, we talk about council here, that we feel that the financial management is strong and the preparation for financial sustainability is in a good place. The fact that you are in a position to earmark reserves to invest in the future is a really positive sign. So I feel confident in the council's ability to manage its financial position going into the future. You've got an experienced finance team, and you know, lots of good news in here, but clearly the longer-term financial challenges that all councils are experiencing are something that East Ayrshire equally will face. Hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you Fiona, and thank you councillor Kyle for the question. When I go to my very experienced financial manager, Fiona, any comment please?
Thank you Chair, I suppose for me, I'd like to just recognise the work that Fiona, Louisa and Kieran have done over the summer, and the incredible positive relationship we have with our external auditor. Fiona knows as well, she's been here in a different guise, at a different time from our previous rotation of auditors, and so she knows East Ayrshire really well, but she does highlight some real challenges for the future and around difficult decisions to be made. And having Fiona and her team in for three months going through every figure gives me great comfort in having that assurance that, you know, colleagues have independently assessed what we are trying to do and what you are trying to do as a governance and scrutiny committee in terms of safeguarding the council. And so just a recognition from me of a grateful thanks to Audit Scotland and to the team for their work. Recognising the work of my own team and the colleagues on the table as well has been incredible, but I really do welcome the report each year from Fiona, because it gives me, in a time of turbulence across the public sector, a real touch point in terms of that I am doing things okay, and we can keep working to the future.
Thank you Joe, and I'll, I don't see anyone else online? More questions? I'll try one more myself, page 17, council papers, that's page 12 in the report. There's a bit here about council house dwellings valuation. I take it as a total value, I can't imagine if there's council officers going around every council house in East Ayrshire, allocating a value to each council house, is there, I mean, how do you do it? Is it some kind of sampling system you do it, or how do you allocate a value to all these council houses?
Thanks Chair, no, someone doesn't go around and value all the houses, that would take quite a bit of time. It's a desktop exercise that's undertaken by VR Estates and is undertaken on their behalf by Graeme and Sibyld when it comes to our asset valuations. So what we do is they'll take a 20% sample of all of our individual categories of assets, including our housing stock, and they will do a desktop assessment of all the different types of houses and different types of locations to get a broad sector valuation of any movement in relation to those houses. And the assessment, as should be said, is for accounting purposes, for the purposes of the accounts, and within the principles that are applied in doing those valuations. So it's a desktop exercise that's undertaken of 20% to make sure that everything's covered, and the point being raised there, that is then projected over the remaining 80%, and that was the adjustment that our auditors had asked to be made, taking that sort of movement that was assessed and applying that across all of the assets in that category. So our estates colleagues and that, and our Graeme and Sibyld on their behalf undertake that on our behalf, but it is desktop.
Thank you very much. And also for our auditors, we have some local trusts and charity funds. Some of them don't actually have any money in, or only have a few pennies in, but you've got to audit them as well and make note of them, can you comment on that please?
Thank you Chair, so yes, we do audit the council trust fund accounts, and there is a letter of representation and a proposed independent auditor's report in the pack that you received, it's right at the back of the papers today, which relates specifically to those trust funds. And there was only one point that we had raised in relation to the trust funds, and that was around the East Ayrshire Charitable Trusts, which are always also called the Mrs E Worker Trust, and it was around there would be no expenditure relating to charitable purposes being processed through those trust fund accounts for the last couple of years, so it could be considered dormant. However, we do know that the council have taken action through work with Oscar to wind up that charity, and the funds remaining have been transferred to Local History Group in order that they're used for charitable purposes in relation to the purposes that the trust was set up under.
Thank you very much for that clarification. And no other questions? Thank you, we'll close that out in the agenda, and for elected members, if you go back to page three on your reports, the recommendations are on paragraph three. Approve the council's audited annual accounts for signature. Who actually signs them? Do I sign them?
No, I think it's the council leader and Joe and Andy.
The council leader, the CEO and the finance officer sign the accounts, and otherwise not the contents of the report. Thank you everyone, happy with that elected members? Thank you, we'll move on now, no, we'll not move on yet. I'd very much like to thank the team from Audit Scotland for coming to East Ayrshire and spending time with us, and for all the good work that you've done. And I'm very happy that it's a nice, clean audit, and we've got strong financial management. So thank you for your time here today, and thank you to Colin and Joe and the financial and digital team for all the work they've done, making sure our budgets and accounts are accurate and strong. Thank you, we'll move on to item three on the agenda, which is bonds and financial guarantees update report, and this is back to Colin again.
Thanks Chair, the purpose of this report is to provide the committee with an update of all the bonds and financial guarantees.
and financial guarantees in place across the council and the management and monitoring arranged in place for them. The report essentially provides a consolidated position of information provided previously to the planning committee and the 22nd of August and the Ayrshire Shared Services Joint Committee on the 6th of June. But as required under APB 8AA and financial guarantees, this report provides governance and scrutiny committee with a collective position of all bonds and financial guarantees managed and monitored by relevant services. As part of monitoring procedures, heads of service and directors are required to confirm through the completion of assurance declarations during the annual accounts process, that all necessary action has been taken by the service to determine the need for bonds or other financial guarantees in respect of contracts under their control. This includes confirming that appropriate monitoring has been undertaken during the year. A review of the 2425 declaration shows that bonds or guarantees are detailed within the governance service under the planning function remit, the Ayrshire Roads Alliance and the People and Culture Service, as detailed at paragraph nine. Paragraph 10 onwards provides summary information regarding performance bonds that are in place and as part of planning consent requirements. These bonds can be called on should the contractor fail to comply with the conditions set out within the contract for which the bond was required. Details of bonds and values and where applicable, any issues raised as part of inspections are attached as appendices one to five of the report presented as per previously to the planning committee. Paragraph 20 onward provides summary information regarding performance bonds that are in place under the remit of the Ayrshire Roads Alliance. These generally relate to roads not constructed by East Ayrshire as the roads authority, including those constructed by housing developers and are designed to cover the costs of constructing the roads should the developer default. The security can take the form of a cash deposit retained by the council or a road bond. Details of bonds and values across both East and South Ayrshire previously presented to the Ayrshire Shared Services Joint Committee and included in appendices six to eight. Additionally, roads authorities have a power to recover costs arising from excessively heavy damage to roads as a result of major developments, non-residential roads bonds. Details of these bonds are noted at paragraph 31. Paragraph 32 provides detail on the financial guarantee that was provided by the head of human resources in 201718 in relation to staff employed by the former West of Scotland Loans Fund subsequently subsumed into Business Loans Scotland. In recent months, the board of Business Loans Scotland has intimated that it will be wound down and have applied to leave the Strathclyde Pension Fund. The head of people of culture and the director of finance and digital have met with the BLF's fund manager and colleagues from SPF to manage the withdrawal from the fund, which is expected to take place imminently. Once this has occurred, the financial guarantee provided by the council will be extinguished. And I'm happy to take any questions thereafter Chair.
Thank you very much Colin. Are we any questions in the room or online? None just now. I'll have a go if no one else has got any questions. Page 88 in my reports, paragraph 22 about road bonds and Ara. Ayrshire Roads Alliance managed 33 road bonds with a current value of 10 and a half million in East Ayrshire and another 27 road bonds with a value of 3.1 million in South Ayrshire. I was just wondering the value of these road and how often we have to call in a road bond and actually use some of that money because someone is not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I take it these, would these come with housing developers? They build the houses, but they don't, they maybe don't complete the road the right way or they forget to complete a payment or something and then we can take action? Is that the idea?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Yeah, that's essentially the principle, that essentially the bonds are there, are put in place as a surety for the works to be complete. Or if it was determined by the road service that the work was essentially not of sufficient standard or there was any issues or problems with the developer in terms of the continuation of their business etc. Then that's essentially what the bonds are held for, for that period of time. If the work is complete and done and there are no issues, then essentially the bond isn't required to be called on. I think we've got Barry McDoan here from Rose, I don't know if Barry's got any more detail that he has on it. But the paper at paragraph 27 details where there has been a call in on bonds in paragraph 27.
Barry, do you want to come in on this? And if, with many examples of us actually having to use these bonds?
Yeah Chair, I think thankfully it's relatively few and far between when we do have to call in a bond. I think in the east, there was a bond called in recently for a development at Mansfield Gardens. I'm quite sure where that is, sorry. But that was successfully called in and it covered the costs to complete the construction of the roads and footways. And I think we're going through the road adoption process as we speak. There was a further bond called in in the south recently in South Ayrshire. That was in relation to Stuart Millen Homes that went into receivership. But again, the road bond that was, that was held there was more than sufficient to cover the outstanding work that was required in that respect.
Thank you Barry. And I take it you can use these bond, you can, I don't know if the word leverage is the right word. If a housing developer has been a bit slow, you can, you can go back and say to them, what's going on here? You moved people into new houses, why is the road not complete? We hold your road bond, are you going to do the work or not? And you can do that?
That's right. The bonds are reduced as each phase of the development progresses. So if you get to a certain level with the construction of the roads, then they are entitled to reduce the bond. But there's always enough left within the bond itself to guarantee the completion of the project. It's true to say there are some developers drag their heels for whatever reason. But it is in their best interest to complete the work, to get their bond money released. But you know, there has been occasions where we have had to chase developers to complete the work.
Thank you. And when the work is completed, at that point, Ayrshire Roads Alliance take responsibility. They adopt that road and pavement and then they look after it. Does the bond money then release back to the developer?
So there's, I think there's a significant amount of the bond is released on completion. But then it gets into a year's maintenance period. So I think after 12 months, there's a final inspection carried out. If there's any further defects picked up at that stage, it's agreed with the developer. That the defects are then rectified to our satisfaction and then the remainder of the bond is released. And then we would start the formal adoption process, which is just basically completing the relevant paperwork.
Thank you very much for that Barry. Excellent answer. Have we any other questions online or in the room? If no other questions, we'll go back to page 84 on the papers and paragraph two. And that's the recommendations that are there. Not the detail of the financial bonds managed and monitored by the council and the work undertaken to resolve and rectify issues. Note the information relating to the financial guarantee provided to Strathclyde Pension Fund and otherwise not the contents of the report. Elected members in the room and online, you happy with that? Note these recommendations. Thank you very much. That ends the meeting. That's a shorter agenda this time. Thank you very much for your attendance and see you the next one. Bye.